Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. Fix that. Hey, everybody, welcome back to the channel. Uh, hope you, hope you can hear me. New phone here and, uh, I don't know if the, I don't know if my microphone works with it or not. I think it should. Um, he can thumbs up me on the audio if it's good. Hopefully it is. Hi, Jerry.
Hi, John. How you doing?
I'm cold.
You're cold, isn't it?
Yes.
Right, for summer.
Well, we gotta wait about six months for that.
Unfortunate.
Yeah. So it's, uh, it's blustery here in Western Pennsylvania. It's cold today. It's gonna be cold here for the next few months, so, uh, hey, everybody, welcome back to the channel. And if you like what you see, leave a comment. If you don't like what you see, leave a comment. I've been watching my, uh, algorithms here lately. Can everybody hear me? Thumbs up me if you can hear me okay. Um, hopefully I'm not just standing here and you can't hear a word I'm saying. Um, so, uh, Southmont Borough Council meeting about to start. There's Sam. So, how you doing, buddy?
Yeah, we're good.
And he's here, so, um, yeah, uh, good times, uh, and all that fun stuff, so, uh, yeah, if you like what you see, leave a comment. If you don't like what you see, leave a comment, so. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Um, so I need that, and I might need that in a minute. I will do that. Thank you very much, brother.
No, bro.
Um, thank you, buddy, and, uh, I'm gonna head inside and, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna go do the, uh, Southmont Borough Council meeting. Always a good time. We're in here again still. Eric's here.
John.
Get cold.
You get thick day.
Yep. Oh, wow, making some headway in here, it looks like.
Do you see five or six here?
What was I through that in there?
How's the project coming along, Amanda?
It's coming.
Is it?
Yeah.
Good. They have all the asbestos out in there yet? They do?
Yeah, it's out. Two weeks ago, I think they were done.
Oh, really? When are they, when's that gonna be done?
Not for a couple more months. Um, probably like February.
Cool. Question for you, just off the top of my head. Is there any way I could, I mean, we can coordinate with everybody, but could I come in sometime and get a progress? Like an update? You can go, you can ask anybody when I get Yeah, I'm gonna just, you know, do a quick little like, hey, this is what they have going on, and, you know? It'd be, it'd be just nice to do.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? If we could, that'd be super.
Yeah, it's gonna get demoed over there right now.
You know, I mean, you know, 'cause that's why, you know, I'd like to see it, you know what I mean? Yeah, progress and something, you know? Something different that, you know?
Yeah.
So don't be just always bitching, like, put out some kind of positive con- content once in a while, you know? That's positivity, right? You guys are using the grant and, you know, that's what
Yeah, probably better sometime during the day, 'cause then
Yeah, of course. Of course, like I said, you know, like
Yeah, we'll do that somehow.
Some of them understand what I mean, so, yes.
I mean, but you have us like
Yeah, 'cause they're doing time for their own
Yeah, you have us doing time, and you have us I mean, I might be able to do it, say, come on. And I'm not the only one. Yeah, I just, I just know we're not gonna be able to do it that short amount of time, so. Yeah, it's, it's just a time, it's just a time matter.
What's up, Matt? I'm good. Cold.
Hey, Bob. How about you?
How are you?
How's Bob doing? Good. You're always losing.
Fans.
Okay.
They have, they did. Yeah. It is a net. You know what? I left mine at work. That's a good spot for it, this one.
Per person?
Your annual amount. She broke it? Oh, you're talking about the whole total?
Uh, that's your, uh, certain side mail.
Well, if the amounts are less per person over there, it's gonna be
Yeah, but you don't, you don't even spend it at first.
Private disposal. So this should probably be One bulk pick up in here. Right. Oh, yeah, you're right. Yearly, the other one should be monthly.
Did you have to use force, man?
Just wanted everybody to get a taste of what we used to do throughout the day.
Yeah, can appreciate it like you live it.
Every time you show up, you're getting skinnier and skinnier. And I keep getting heavier.
There's a theory, it has to go someplace else, so the world will be off now.
Yeah, I got it.
So there's a lot of socks somewhere though.
Yeah. Yeah, the root is still advertising the new address, but so much money from the root. Yeah. Probably does hurt out there. Yeah. Thank goodness we have.
Are you talking? I guess.
That's it.
I don't like
That's it, when it's a two place of
I want sunshine, and I'd rather be out cutting grass and shoveling snow.
I mean, I prefer the time period where you don't have a cut grass.
Yeah, yeah. Plus the bud.
This next one's due tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
It keeps always on, helping beauty.
I like this one.
Yeah. Yeah, they keep going up at reed and fire and All right. They're lucky to get Used to get thirty.
There's a ninety-five gallon. Oh, there we go. There we are.
So I guess they assume it's
Yeah, we're
Great.
So I was The difference is this.
But they wipe them.
Yeah, what size?
Oh, yeah. You're good, yeah. Well, ninety-five gallon, what's your sideboard?
So it's one ninety-two. Or you can either get the beer. Uh, I think private disposal. The small, the small cans are only for elderly or like that type of stuff. You can request one that's like eight or more. Yeah, I remember that. Some of those, most people are gonna get this one. He said only elderly people would pay really small. Yeah. This is over three years, seven months. So this is annually, it would be this. And they just got to take that.
Right.
Good eyes on that. Call the meeting to order. Rise for the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a reminder to please mute your devices. Uh, roll call, Amanda.
Anthony Kiper.
Here.
Doug Berry.
Here.
Richard Burkert.
Here.
Herb Ewald.
Here.
Eugene Capcella.
Here.
Matt McPicker.
Here.
Bob Morgan.
Here.
Sherry Sliker.
Here.
All right. Public comment. There is a five-minute time limit. Please clearly state your name and where you reside. First on this list is Jim Daly.
Hi, uh, Jim Daly. I live at twenty-six Harding Street. Um, back again. Uh, second meeting concerning the parking issues we're having in our neighborhood with, uh, somebody wanting private parking in a public street parking area. Um, again, it just seems to be a real bad domino effect, and even today, as we were leaving for the meeting, our neighbor having two handicap spots. She refuses to use one, but now somebody's parked in her spot that's not tagged or properly labeled, which is against the law, but she just thinks that, you know, that's her private to loan out to anybody that is coming to see her. And it clearly states in the law that you have to have a proper placard to park there. And she refuses to follow the laws. Uh, however, too, that has been a domino effect down the street. She has people coming and then parking, which, again, street parking, we, we knew that when we bought the house. But apparently she wants all the front street and all the back streets, so she can just use it as a driveway, pull in, pull out. Her claim apparently on social media is that she can't parallel park, she can't turn her head because of some issue with her neck. Again, I don't know, it's not my, not my problem, but she runs up and down the steps all the time, carrying packages and everything, so I don't know what handicap it is. Again, not my concern, that's her privacy, but I don't see any physical issue with her, you know, getting around her house and up and down the steps, 'cause you know those area down there, there's quite a few steps to go up and down, but uh, you know, the neighbors too are like just at the point now, it's, uh, you know, we can't park, and again, I'm just not sure. Parallel parking, you have to parallel park out front or the back. And where she's parked right now, I'm there, she's there, you have to parallel park, so I'm not sure why she has excuse of can't parallel park. And so, I, I'm just not sure. Kind of hoping that she doesn't get additional handicap parking, since she's not even utilizing the one that was assigned to her a couple of months ago. So I'm hoping you take that in consideration. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Deb Daly.
Hi, um, I live at twenty-six Harding Street. Um, this has been ongoing, and, um, I'm just wanting to say that the, where it's parked on, where she's parked right now on Harding Street, that's privately owned. The woods are privately owned. The borough doesn't own that. Did she or anybody here get permission for her to have a handicap parking there? Um, and if she does park there, she's gonna have to park on the street. She's parked on the sidewalk. Um, and the neighborhood's already accommodating two handicap spots that she's not using, and they're not using it correctly. Um, and my concern from this meeting is that the last meeting that we were at, her retaliation towards us was unbearable. She went onto social media and slandered us immensely. Uh, defamation of character. We have copies of all of it. Um, she went to look to see where our cameras were on our house. We've had cameras, security cameras, since two thousand fifteen. She knew about it at that time. No problem until now. She was walking around taking photos of what she thought was our cameras. She saw our doorbell camera, put a spotlight on the, our back door for a week, until my husband told her, you do this, we're gonna press charges. Um, you need to remove it. Um, and then she calls West Hills Police numerous times on us, saying that we're harassing her. That night, my husband caught her looking into our, our window. He went out and confronted her. She called the police and said, he's, he yelled at me, he's harassing me. That's because it's our privacy. Nobody needs to look into our window. She was looking to see where our cameras were. Um, it just, I'm, I'm over it. I just want this to stop. We, we've lived there for thirty-seven years, raised our family there, never had issues like this before. And I just want all of this harassment to stop. Okay, thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm John Clanchar. Let him speak first. Um, okay. These people sitting here, they're gonna do nothing for you. Okay? I have a situation up on Delia Street. I ended up in court, cost me four thousand dollars. I park a car beside my house. I go to jail for ninety days to contempt of court. So, I'm just forewarning you, take a good look. They're gonna stick you right up the ass. Trust me. That's all I have to say. John Clanchar, Delia Street, um, I wanna discuss a few things on the, on the, um, agenda first, uh. You guys are all talking, bawling over the garbage bids and whatnot. Please, please stay with Pro Disposal. Even if there are a few dollars more, please, um, for several reasons, I wanna say for several reasons. Um, first of all, Pro Disposal's local. They're a local company. Are you guys out of Portage still, I believe, or? Evansburg, okay. Um, Waste Management is a huge conglomerate corporate thing that is example of a buying up all these other different little, you know, so you know, Southmont, we're, we wanna keep things local if at all possible, you know, and, and speaking from experience and what I've dealt with, anytime Pro Dispo, anytime I've had any trouble with Pro Disposal, I've called Amanda, and Amanda has immediately, that day, if they've missed my pickup or whatever, okay? They, that day, they have come later and picked it up. If it's with Waste Management, it will be just a, ju- ju- just a problem, okay? They, they are not a very, they are not very, um, customer-based or whatever, okay? So even if it's a couple dollars more, please, as a cu- as a customer, I wanna speak, go with Pro Disposal, keep it local, keep, you know, let's, let's try to keep everything, you know, as, i- if we can, um. You know, um, I, 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 I wanna, I wanna speak quickly about, um, the situation that's going on with, uh, neighbors coming down here to, to tattle-tale on their neighbors, okay? If it, that's, that's not the place of the Borough Council. Place of Borough Council is to legislate and to make laws, okay? It's not your place to listen, to, to, to do anything about, about neighbors complaining about parking or whatever, okay? If it's illegal, direct them to call the police, okay? And the police can file charges if there's a criminal thing. But from what I, my understanding is there are handicap, there's handicap spaces that have been, that have been, um, that have been, um, issued. So, at this point, you know, and, and, you know, there's no expectation of privacy if somebody's in public. So if someone wants to, to, you, you know, take pictures you know, I don't know if there are any ordinances about light pollution or not, but if there aren't, you know, um, you know, so, some people, some people like to have spotlights on to keep their areas lit, you know? And if there's not a problem with that, then there shouldn't be. Um, it's not, we, it, like, like I've said before, okay? We don't have an HOA in Southmont Borough, in Southmont Borough. Okay, if people want an HOA, then start one, okay? Or move to an area that has an HOA, but stop picking on your neighbors because you don't like them. Okay, that's not your place to decide on neighbor squabbles, okay? People need to just keep it amongst themselves and not bother the Borough Council with, with, with their, with their problems and not allow Borough Council to make things criminal. Okay? The only thing that Borough Council can do is, is make something illegal, which could potentially be protected, okay? And then, and then it opens up the borough to li- legis, or, um, um, legal, um, le- legal, uh, uh, you know, liability, and that's not what we want, you know, so i- i- if neighbors can't, can't just get along, okay, then it i- i- it's not your place to, to get in between neighbors and, and, and decide fights, okay? They need to figure it out amongst themselves, and if they don't like it, they can move, okay? They, you know, if a neigh- if one neighbor doesn't like another neighbor, they can always offer to speak with Sherry about maybe buying that neighbor out, okay? Or get ten neighbors together and come up with some money and buy that property out, so then that neighbor can move. But until that time, you know, if you don't like somebody because they're, because they are a jerk, or because you don't like them for whatever reason, or because they're different, or, or they do things that you don't think are, 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 are normal, or, or proper, or correct, or right, then, um, you know, that's not the Borough Council's place to, to legislate that. And, um, finally, I wanna say, thank God, this is Herb Ewald's last meeting. Fuck you, Herb. That's all I have today.
Uh, Bree, I'm not sure, I can't read your handwriting.
Bree Falatovich, sorry.
Okay.
Um, my name's Bree Falatovich. I live at twenty-four Harding Street, I'm two doors down from Jim and Daly. Um, I'm here mainly to support them and all coming, ongoing issue of now her son's friend watching to see where my vehicle's at, waiting for me to depart, moving down to block my area and my steps that I own. Um, and then to which now, I'm ending up parking further down the street, again, it's a public street. Knew that when my father bought the house. Um, no problem on that front, however, then we have other neighbors in the street honking their horn, causing a scene yelling in the middle of the street. Um, and my main concern is that this could end up becoming violent. Um, again, this neighbor has handicap spots. Um, I understand handicap parking, that is not my concern. My concern is people using it illegally, um, without tags, and then, again, it ending up as a domino effect down the street and potentially becoming violent. I ask that you please don't give more accommodation to somebody who is already abusing that. Thank you.
Uh, last, we have Larry.
Uh, Larry Coball, three thirty-six Orchard Street. I just wanted to say, I observed two stumps on trees in the upper part of Orchard Street that were cut down probably one or two years ago, and the stumps on the borough property, uh, in the past, it's always been the case, if the trees were cut down, it was the owner's responsibility to replace those trees. And it's been at least two years now, and those stumps remain. I don't know if somebody from the shade tree, uh, committee can look at that and determine, you know, does the person that owns the property need to put a new tree in? 'Cause it's unsightly having stumps. Uh, there's one on the right-hand side going up, and there's one on the left-hand side. Um, not the whole Anokar, but back where you just got up to the level spot, so just an observation about that.
All right.
Permission to kinda speak, sit here in the public, or was I supposed to fill something out?
Um, you can.
Thank you. Uh, Ralph Zerner with Waste Management. Just a couple of things that I wanted to clarify or let you all know regarding our bid. With Waste Management, we do have community-specific websites, so specific to Southmont Borough, where the residents could go online to their own URL. They could access all the services and information that WM provide, specific to the contract. I know most of us have smartphones now, so we also have our smartphone app, which residents can download that. They can self-serve hundred percent of the time. If they have a container that they need repaired, they can put the ticket in. If they wanna check their schedule, they can go on there and check it as well. Or they can check their holiday schedule, so there's some other capabilities there, so, thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Hello, everyone. Um, since today is the last meeting with Mayor Anthony Kiper and Councilman Herb Ewald, I would like to take this, um, public comment period to recognize first Anthony Kiper, and it's in recognition of his four years of continued service as Mayor of Southmont. And with gratitude and appreciation from Southmont Borough, I have an old map of oldest one I could find of Borough for you.
Thank you very much.
There's this little spot right here. It was part of Upper Yoder, as we all know. And so there it is, and congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you again. Wish you luck.
Yeah. Herb, you're next. This is presented to Herbert Ewald in recognition of his twenty years of dedicated service to Southmont Borough as a councilman. With gratitude and appreciation from Southmont Borough, December eighth, twenty twenty-five. And this is a picture of old Southmont. Historical picture that I got. Congratulations, well done.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
There you go. And
Beautiful.
Both on the back is the letter, and it's on
Thanks again.
Thanks to Amanda Southmont, stationery. But thank you, guys.
Anything else? All right. Uh, next, we need, uh, decision on the garbage bids. And I do have a motion.
I make the motion for Pro Disposal for the, uh, ninety-five gallon.
I make the motion for Pro-Disposal for the ninety-five gallon Henry Cyclone.
And that is, um, the one, once.
For a month. One, one a month. Or which pickup, yeah.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Just clarification, is we admitted for either one, two, or three-year contract?
Three. Three, okay.
I'll second the three as well. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We don't have anything under correspondence, uh, minutes. We need a motion to approve the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. South Regional Police.
For the month of November, the police department had three hundred and seventy-eight reports of service. yearly total so far is three thousand nine hundred and eighty-five. Last month, sixty-two of those were in Southmont, with a yearly total of eight hundred and forty-six. So far, a hundred and fifteen traffic citations for each one, and a hundred and six.
What's the status of the merger?
Right now, we are providing police protection services to Upper Yoder. The agreement draft was just finished as of um, last weekend, and now just wait for approval with the Police Commission and Upper Yoder Supervisors to agree and sign onto it. Then they will be officially part of the commission January first.
Chief, how many officers do you have then? When you take the
Total?
Yeah, total.
Well, fifteen full-time and right now, six part-time.
And you're gonna have how many vehicles?
Uh, seven, seven, eight, eight vehicles. We're actually, we're getting rid of two, of two of the older ones.
More territory.
Yes.
We go down to Lower Yoder too, like, clear down to help with spring. It's a big area as well.
Twenty-eight square miles.
Uh, Southmont Volunteer Fire Company.
Yeah, our report's from November twenty twenty-five. We had a total of twelve calls. Uh, the breakdown is automatic fire alarms, one in the borough, one assist. Appliance fire was one out of the area. Structure fires, four outside, uh, in the surrounding areas. Vehicle accident fire, one, uh, assist. Wires down, one in the borough. Assist EMS, one in the borough. And then locked out from a residence, uh, one in the borough. Two side notes, um, our, uh, Santa Claus escort is December twentieth at five-thirty. The routes and times, uh, are on our website. So, of course, we'll be, you know, passing out for any of the kids that, you know, coming on to see Santa Claus and that and the sleigh. And then, uh, also too, we just took delivery and, uh, we purchased a replacement utility. Uh, it's downstairs in the bay. It's not new, it's used, but, uh, it's, we took a look at it, and it is definitely going to provide, uh, a lot more than what our previous unit was. It was just rusting away and just falling apart, a lot of mechanical issues, and we got all those corrected. And we, uh, you know, we're just gonna put it out there for anybody to purchase it. Usually contractors and that usually pick up those vehicles, because, you know, they have all the ready-made cabinets and that and uh, scene lighting. Of course, we'll take all the red lights off and the, the badging, but hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we should have the new unit up and running. Thank you. Uh, the new, the old one was like two thousand and one, two thousand and two, so it was we got a lot of use out of it, you know, it definitely got our money's worth. Uh, the new one is a twenty fifteen. Where we got it from is outside of Pittsburgh. Every ten years, something gets replaced, that's just it. Whether, it doesn't have to be broke down, worn out, that's just how. Apparently, they have casino money. So they have a nice budget.
Does that include the cascade system?
No, no, we're not replacing the rescue, this is the utility. This is the smaller, yeah, the crew cab pickup truck, yeah. But, you know, there's definitely, has a lot more features on it than we never had in the previous one. So, yeah, we're definitely going to, uh, you know, get a lot of use and, uh, be more versatile for other things, so.
Any other questions for the fire company? All right, engineer?
Uh, I got an update from our Randy Corus architect for the municipal building project. Uh, the rough framing's complete, uh, abatement's complete, rough and electrical, seventy-five percent complete. Something's roughed in. Uh, door openings have been cut into the existing masonry wall and temporary shorings in place until the lentils arrive. And the roof work is waiting for warmer weather. I see on the agenda, there's a motion for the pay estimate number one, so we can discuss that then. And an MS four update next year is a permit renewal in the fall, September, I believe it is. Um, DEP did issue a draft. Uh, currently, Southmont's permit doesn't require any, uh, like, brick and mortar projects because of the, the contaminant, the sediment, and and the, the new permit has stormwater volume control requirements. So the state developed some fancy-dancy software that, uh, engineers can input data for each specific community, and it'll, you know, do what it does, and then we'll have to see what kind of reductions we've got to target.
And one with, that, one of those requirements, do?
Uh, the permits are typically five-year permits, so I would imagine year one, they're gonna want you to run the flow, the calculator model, and like, year two, planning-type thing, so probably towards the end of that permit period, if I had to guess.
Is there any, probably any conditions where the water's coming into the building? I know we haven't had too much rain, but coming in. My concern is, you fix all this stuff up and then you get raining on it. You know, you're back to square one. I always thought you put the roof on first, then you did the inside, but it didn't happen that way today. If there's any spots, I know there was a spot back here in the radio room, and water leaking in.
Yeah.
And I think they should be addressed real quickly before
that's, that's a fair point.
Any other question? All right, zoning report is in the packet.
We actually didn't get it quite yet, um, just because the meetings were so close together.
There is a letter here, though. For the Dollar World. Any questions on that? Solicitors report. I'll just, I'll hold, hold my comments till later on, there are a few agenda items that I can review with the council at that point. All right. Street Commissioners report. Don't have, uh, too much to add to mine. Any questions for you? Borough Managers report.
Um, I have nothing further unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Amanda? Mayor's report.
In regards to the, uh, decision, uh, to move the handicap parking space for, uh, Ms. Fashiani, it's a, coming up later in the agenda. I did have, uh, I could, around late November, uh, I did submit to Amanda, and she sent Fashiani to the council here, you know, some clinical notes and uh, a medical opinion from her treating physician, uh, there, regarding her. And also, um, she also just sent us an email, I don't know if everybody had a chance to review it, about a little earlier this afternoon, uh, Amanda has a copy in the packet. She is asking for it to be read through council at the meeting here tonight, but I'm not a hundred percent positive. She wants everything public in there. We read out loud, so everybody can read that, uh, if you haven't already done so. Prior to the decision later on, in, on UJ, appreciate it.
Uh, discussion items and committees. I have nothing for administrative or Borough Services. Uh, Richard, community, community planning and improvements.
Uh, we did have a steering committee in late November. Uh, it was, I think, a really good meeting. Jing Capcella attended. Uh, the effort is, sort of, suspended into December. Will resume in the first of the year. Uh, I think we'll begin to, um, so far, it's been mostly community outreach and input, you know, just gathering ideas, and nothing more substantive planning will occur throughout twenty twenty-six.
Any questions for Richard? Emergency management, Anthony?
Uh, nothing to report.
Okay. Finance, Sherry?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Uh, Greater Johnstown Water Authority, Eugene?
Um, nothing substantial, except that, you know, the lead line replacements continue throughout the, the region. Um, areas of Westmont are complete, as in our last report. And I think we're moving on to Moxom, trying to do any excavation in conjunction with gas company excavations at the same time. So it's a ten-year process. I'm not quite sure when Southmont will get there, but sometime eventually. That's it.
Any questions for Eugene? MS four, Sherry?
And we need, uh, um, a motion to approve the updates to the Public Education and Outreach Program for the MS four, some information that we have here at the Borough, um, pertaining to water management, um, so we will need a, we need a motion on that.
Do I have a motion?
Summate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I have nothing on personnel, uh, police. Bob, do you have anything?
Nothing, Chief, or.
All right, property maintenance, streets and sidewalks.
Not much, I just, we need motions for for the handicap parking there.
Yes, so we need a decision on the request to move the handicap parking space for Fashiani.
So what does she have right now?
She has two spaces.
Yeah, there's two spaces in the rear on Shady Lane.
And what is she requesting?
Uh, for one of those to be moved to the front on Harding Street.
So she'd still just have the two?
Yeah, but the issue is on Harding Street, it's right, um, at that sharp curve. Um, so if it's, the people that are parking there now are kind of parking up on the curb. So if we put a handicap parking spot in the front, that's gonna take up a good bit of the, um, the lane. Because it does get narrowed there.
On the handicap spot, what's the criteria? Do you have to have a person, a handicap person for each sign?
Yes, so they each have a placard.
Who's the other recipient?
Her son.
And he has proof of that?
Yes.
And so you're saying moving it to that, well, the request to location would be an unsafe parking
I would say so.
That's what I was gonna say, if it's unsafe, I'll, you know, approve it. And Eric, there is no requirement for the Borough to provide any handicap spaces, or is there, what is?
Well, we have the ordinance that allows for it.
Allows for the Borough to do that?
Yeah, we have an ordinance that allows the Borough, so a resident can apply, and that's why she got the two spaces. So we do, we do have an ordinance that allows for that.
Does she have two or three?
Two.
Am I correct, Eric, that ADA does not cover street parking? That's what I've read.
I mean, the, the question is, should you make an original accommodation from your ordinance that permits handicap parking? That's, that's the question. So, you know, and it's a, for the handicap spot, you have to, clearly have to park on the road. If she does have two spots, that's what, and that's what the, was granted for handicap spaces.
So it's a determination of the Borough that it would not be safe to put one on?
Correct. Yeah, we did just have an issue with plowing also, um, just with people not being able to make it up there, they had to back down, so I think if there was a, a spot there, that would have been.
All right, so we need a motion one way or another.
Well, we're not doing anything. I mean, if somebody wants to do something.
So we either need to approve or deny the request.
I make a motion that we deny it due to the fact that, uh, the Borough, um, Public Works thinks that it would be unsafe.
All right, is there a second to that? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I guess we have to decide on this date here, correct?
Yeah, decision on the pricing proposals for Gardner Street curb.
This is a stormy, like, in a third project.
Correct. And looks like, um, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. And last, Shade Tree, Richard?
Shade Tree, um, we, the Shade Tree Committee has, uh, met with our solicitor twice to review a Shade Tree Commission ordinance, and we've made substantial changes, and we're waiting to, uh, review a third draft. Uh, the Shade Tree inventory and maintenance, uh, uh, grant application to DCNR that we filed early in twenty twenty-five. Uh, now, we're optimistic that the state will move on those grants now, and we'll, you know, in the near future. Uh, and hopefully, we'll have a fifty thousand dollar grant to fund most of the costs of, uh, you know, doing that. That will be a three-year project, inventory, uh, train volunteers, and implement, uh, a much more active, uh, Shade Tree program. But that's also pending, or the grants.
Any questions for Richard? All right, new business, old business. Uh, first up, we have, um, the introduction of our new tax collector, Mike Barzesski. He wanted to introduce himself to council.
Hi, I'm Mike Barzesski. I was recently elected as the Borough Tax Collector. I live at one fifty-six Violet Street. I've lived in Southmont for a little over five years now. Um, I'm currently a teacher at Westmont Hilltop Junior, Senior High School. I'm just here to say hi, um, to let you all know that I'm in the process of, um, like, doing the tax collector basic training, I'm getting the necessary clearances. And I just wanted to know whether you wanted to discuss it now, or after the meeting, or at a different time, like, what information I need from you guys in terms of the, like, the, the day-to-day or the mechanics of how this position works. I don't really know much about it, like, so I just wanted to know if there was any information you felt like you would need to give to me at this point. And we can talk about it when, when you're available, talk about it, whether today or another day, so.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding from council, like, we don't really have much to do with the tax collector. Um, like, all of that's type of information comes from the county.
Right.
Um, but other than, like, working with Amanda on, like, day-to-day with, like, office setup and that type of stuff, that would be the only.
Yeah, so we can coordinate and talk about some things.
Okay, um, after the meeting for a couple of minutes, maybe?
Sure.
All right, next up, we need to approve the twenty twenty-six final budget. Do I have a motion?
Summate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approve advertising the twenty twenty-six final budget.
Summate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We need to approve We need to approve ordinance number 554, setting the tax mileage for 2026.
Sumed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We need to approve advertising ordinance number 555, setting garbage and recycling fee.
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Discussion. In the ordinance, there's a section for commercial and business. And it's not, it's not going to be possible for businesses to get this set up by January 1st.
This is just for the fees.
Oh, okay.
The, the one you're talking about is next.
I'm sorry, I was just prethinking.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the setting the garbage and recycling fee for ordinance number 555. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, so next is approve advertising ordinance number 556, providing recycling.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
All right, discussion?
I'm impressed. Looking at the recycling section, it kind of sets aside the idea of garden waste and yard waste. What do we do with that? I mean, obviously it's not going to fit in the standard containers anymore. And.
If it doesn't fit in the can, like if it's in the can, the garbage will take it. If not, we can, the borough can pick it up.
Borough will pick it up?
Yeah.
I think we want to make sure that that's not part of the recycling. The yard waste isn't part of the recycling program. I just wanted to exclude it.
I just wanted to begin with it.
Yeah.
I mean, because, yeah, that's something that a lot of people, I do anyway, have a lot of yard waste that I usually try to do. And I know we do branches monthly, but it's like grass clippings and things like that. Normally would have gone to trash cans, but now I don't think that's going to provide space for that anymore. So there is a mechanism to get rid of that.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we'll have to set up some sort of a system, like maybe just call the borough ahead of time and let us know. We can pick up the bag.
I mean, like, for example, in some years, I've had up to five garbage cans full of pine cones. It's a huge, huge mass of yard waste to get rid of. I know that.
So on 2B on the ordinance, and down under C, well, it talks about how businesses have to set up a whole system. And multifamily properties have to set up a whole system. There just isn't enough time to do this prior to January 1st. So I would either like that taken out of the ordinance or a delayed timeframe for getting this whole system set up for the multifamily properties with the businesses, like McCullough House and the ones that are on the, they're, um, and, and so it covers people that have their own disposal systems now. Where in the past, that, that wasn't covered under our garbage ordinance. So if you have pro-disposal come and do your dumpsters, it still covers you. So anyone like McCullough House, the Southmont Park Complex, businesses at the Long Monaca Boulevard, they're going to have to get a whole system set up. And we just don't have time, we just don't have time to do it. We've got to get people trained, I mean, we've got 40, 50 places just in the building across the street alone. And nine on Thover, and we've got to get people trained exactly what they're supposed to do with.
Since this ordinance is, is drafted under 101, which provides for recycling programs, the borough, because its population isn't subject, subject to the Act 101 requirements. This was included, my, my thought was that if the borough did apply for a recycling grant, that the state would probably want to see that at least you're meeting those 101 conditions, sort of a minimum standard. So it's not, you know, borough's not required to have that provision in the ordinance. It's not a requirement, it was just drafted to be in compliance with ordinance, with, excuse me, with Act 101, which is the mandatory, under certain population sizes, I mean, this guy must have recycling programs. Again, the borough doesn't, population isn't, isn't as that size, so it's not required to meet those requirements.
Even if, even if there was an extension on time for the businesses, but in this, they need to provide documentation to the borough annually. They've got to keep track of their tonnage of recycled materials during the previous year. It's just not something you can just throw at somebody and say, you're starting this January 1st. You've got to have proper containers, you've got to have a whole system set up. You've got to have, you've got to train the, the borough in general on this, so.
I mean, you have, you could, you can phase that in in a year, period of time.
I would like to see, I would like to see the commercial part of this phased in, so that people would have time to set up collection systems for their recycled material and be able to set up contain, I mean, we have to find places to, to do all this, and then we've got to get the containers set up and figure all that out. And it's just not doable by January 1st.
Would you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, you know, and this just, this just me speaking outside of the, I think that the commercial businesses should be able to elect that if they, if they like, because that's how their garbage is set up. They, they elect who they like and who they want to service them. And if they want to do that service for themselves, the, the actual businesses out, you know, inside the borough, that's just mine.
But that's not what this ordinance says. This ordinance says, so we're Southmont Park condos, we serve stuff. So we have to train four businesses in 40 units, where to take their stuff, how to take their stuff. We've got to get container, I mean, it, it just, this is not doable for anybody on a larger scale or any business to set up by January 1st, is all I'm saying. It, I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying it's not doable in this quick, short time period. So whether we take it out or whether we give the commercial properties and larger multifamily properties more time to set this up, is, is what we're going to need to do. Because we're going to be training everybody in the whole borough, even like over on Thover and Street. We've got nine containers over there, we've got to figure out what to do with your new containers. We've got to figure, and they may be sitting on the road or on the sidewalk, because I, I just don't know where they're going to be sitting.
Yeah, I believe you guys have a.
We have, we have them down in the little.
Corral, like.
Yeah, so I don't know if the new ones are going to fit there, or your machine's going to pick it up from there. There's just a lot of training that needs to be done and a lot of logistics that needs to be thought out. So my recommendation is before we pass this, that we either take out the commercial language in here, or we delay the commercial language and give them more time to set their systems up.
Okay, as far as educating people on recycling, is that something you guys do?
Yes. Yep, we'll send a letter to each resident, something we've never done in the past, because you guys have just, you've done the billing. So I'll ask Amanda to provide us with a list of residents. And we have people in our office that go ahead and get letters prepared and educational letters. It'll show recycling weeks, it'll show trash weeks, everything, what days, and we'll send all that to the residents. So we'll show you exactly what you can recycle, what's not recyclable. And we'll, we'll send a letter out to every single resident prior to January 1.
The commercial property, do they generally generate more garbage than just the residential? I mean, do they, is there a volume bigger than, larger than?
Typically, if it's a nine-unit resident or commercial, it's nine residential units, so it's, it's equivalent to nine.
You'd have no problem picking that up, though?
No, but I guess my point with the, with the commercial is, is like to Sherry's point, is do they really, you know, is it really necessary to do that now, or would it, is it a transition phase of, hey, we'll work with Sherry and other, other places to say, hey, you know, we do this, you know, April 1 maybe, or whatever might make sense.
The commercial buildings were never, that, that hired their own dumpster services were never covered under our garbage ordinance in the past.
Correct, that's, that's.
So.
Why would they be now?
What you're saying, Sherry, is we should revise.
I would just like to see that either taken out or, or the, or the commercial properties be given more time, because this specifically states that we would be responsible. We have to have a location, we have to have written instructions, we've got, we have to have containers to be placed in an easier, easily accessible location. And written instructions shall be provided that the tenants concerning availability and the collection. Our, our tenants, so, ours aren't tenants, ours are owners. A lot of our owners have purchased in our building because they do not want to deal with steps. In order for them to get to where we would have to have this at, they would have to go down to the lowest level and then down the steps into the basement. That's the only place in our building that we would have in order to be able to set up any kind of recycling. So my suggestion to this would be just to take, and, and I'm just an example of what other businesses might have, or huge multi, you know, properties might have problems with. Same with over at Thover, and we're going to have to figure out where they're going to do this at Thover, and that's a nine-unit building over there.
How do they deal with the routine trash?
They have.
I'm not talking about recycling now. To my understanding, recycling is not mandatory for us, so.
No, it's not.
If you want to recycle, you can. If you don't want to.
Not if you vote for this.
No, we don't, right now, the borough doesn't recycle.
And we're, and we're not mandated?
Not mandated, so you could, you could certainly delete or delay enforcement of, 4B and 4C are really the ones that deal with multifamily housing units and commercial and institutional establishments.
But if we vote for this, recycling will be mandatory.
Well, as, the way it's written, yeah, unless, the way it's presented, it would be, it would be, unless, but that's up to council. So that's, we, that's up to council decision, that's, we don't need, that's maybe not necessary, or you can delay those provisions coming into effect at a later period of time.
So to this ordinance makes recycling mandatory, and then it also tells us how the commercial properties have to do their recycling to the point where we have to record our tonnage and report it to the borough.
That's correct.
That's what this ordinance says, which is a, a whole lot different than what we have done up until this point. And so it's fine for pro-disposal to say, you don't have to worry about it. But then I'd be in violation. And so would 40 or 50 units in this borough of this ordinance. So that's, that's my issue with this. I mean, if you're just looking at residential in Doug's house or Bob's house or, you know, whatever, that's fine. You know, we've got no problem with that. But you've got to think down the road about what problems are going to come up and what people have to do in order to achieve this. And this is December the 8th, am I correct? We're talking January 1st. So I think that if you want to pass this ordinance, that's fine, but you need to take the commercial and the multifamilies out of this ordinance if you're going to pass it that fast.
You want to make a motion?
I would make that motion.
Hold it. We have a motion and a second already.
We're in discussion, that's right, we're in discussion.
Yes, we're in discussion.
So we would have to rescind that and that a motion be made that.
It says we're providing recycling. Is that my understanding? But we're not mandating. Who's going to check on whether you recycle or not?
I mean, well, that, that's the ordinance, is that the residents have to recycle, required to recycle, and that's set forth in the ordinance. And there's a provision there, if they don't, then there's enforcement mechanisms.
In order for us to have recycling, borough code requires us to have an ordinance.
Yes, you just, you have to have an ordinance in this camp.
So this is, this is mandating recycling, Bob?
And if you were, again, if you did, if your population was above 5,000, you'd have to have, you have to be in compliance with 101. But since it's below, you can enact an ordinance and put what provisions you don't or do not want in there. But you clearly, if you want to do recycling, you need an ordinance.
Right now, I have a big container full of plastic which goes down to Roxbury. I take care of it myself. Now, what happens if?
You put it to curb.
Well, I mean, you can still drop, you don't, you're still recycling, I mean, it's, you, you decide to do it on your own. I mean, it's, that's up to you.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is the person that made the motion, I can't remember who made the motion. Do they want to rescind a permission?
That would have been Jean.
So I still have another question. Does, could we just start, like Sherry asked, say, June 1st? Is six months enough to come, to think for the people to, to figure out what they got to do?
Well, even at that, the, the first question is, I guess the first question is, are we going to mandate recycling? And I guess we have decided to do that. We haven't voted, well, we did vote to do that. So the second question is, in this ordinance, it covers the businesses that hire dumpsters themselves and take care of their own garbage themselves. And that's not the way that our garbage ordinance ever was before. So if we pass this as it's written, we are telling every commercial property, every multifamily over four units, that they have to set up systems and they have to follow these systems. And they have to report their tonnage to the, I don't know. How would we, how would we know what our tonnage is?
We would.
Mr. Pro-disposal?
We would.
You would know our tonnage?
And we would report that.
And then you would give it to the borough, you would give it to the businesses.
And we do that on, so if you have a, you know, we, we know, basically, what we do that on is based on averages. So if you have a two-cubic yard container, or one cubic yard, or four cubic yard container, we know how many times we pick that up, what the average weight is, et cetera, so, and that's how we do that.
I would like to see the commercial businesses taken out of this ordinance.
Right, that's what I said.
Okay, so if Jean, you want to rescind your motion, or do we want to vote on that?
I would, personally, I would like to see everybody recycle. I'd give it to six months, would be my, my preference on that. Does anybody totally disagree with me?
But you live in a house and you don't have a business and you don't have a, a, a 40-some-year complex. You don't have a dumpster, you don't pay for that dumpster.
How many, how many contractors are there out there, independent of you, like in pro-disposal, pick up trash in Southmont, do you think? Are there, are there others? I mean, who do these other?
We have, we have an exclusive contract, so I wouldn't believe so, no.
So the weight issue.
Are you, are you, you mean for a business standpoint?
How do they, how do they get rid of their trash? It's the businesses.
Same way we do, we have, we have dumpsters.
You don't, you don't have a, you don't have a basket for every resident down there. They get down, they put it in the dumpster.
They go out in the hall, and this is my other point. The people buying are, people, people have bought those condos. A lot of them have mobility issues. They go down the hallway, they open a door, they put the bag in. We hire a person to come to our building a couple times a week to move those dumpsters around, to push them outside, to pull them in, put them out in the parking lot when, before pro-disposal comes. It's, it's, they could not do what you are asking them to do. They just couldn't. And like I said, a lot of them, we have several people that are eighties, nineties with mobility issues. They can't go down to the basement, they, they, they can't bundle their stuff and go down to the basement, put it in different bins there.
Sherry, is that a paying proposition for the homeowner?
What's that?
Is that a paying proposition from the, for the condo owner? In other words, do they charge them?
No, the, the, the garbage is included in their fees, the garbage is included in their fees, yeah.
So we're talking about two different things here.
No, but that, but that's my point, this ordinance makes it be all the same.
I don't think it should be, I think we should, we should extract those, those facilities out of the ordinance.
No, we're talking about, so that's for, four B and four C deal with.
Right.
Multifamily residents and commercial.
Yeah, we're making it complicated by including them.
Right, so Jean has a, Jean has a motion on the table and it's been seconded.
What would be the, uh, motion that would replace it?
To, to exclude the, the commercial and.
Multi-units.
Multi-units over four.
And, and Suster does the, would that make your effort to make us eligible for grants through this 101?
Well, mine just, I was not saying that's the case. I didn't, but if you, clearly if you're applying, applying for a recycling grant, they would, they would look at 101 as the criteria and they'd say.
Why would we need a recycling grant?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just, I'm drafting, you're not required, you don't, you're not required under 101 to have any recycling.
We're too small.
You can do whatever you, you can, you can pick and choose what you like.
Except for personal preference.
We're taking something here that's worked so far and simple, we're making it, complicating it by whatever.
So, as I said, you can take out four, you remove four B and C. So the new motion would be something simple like approving the ordinance without.
Four B and four C.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll rescind that.
Or do you wanna amend your motion?
And we'll amend it to exclude the, um, businesses and multifamily residences with, but encourage them to do it.
Right.
Can we do that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so you have amended your motion.
Yeah.
The part, who seconded that, Amanda?
Um, I think I did.
Were you?
Sure, I'll agree to that.
Hold on to your motion here. You know, to remove the provision for all right, businesses, encourage them.
So the new motion is to approve the ordinance, the amended motion is to approve the ordinance with the, with excluding sections four B and C. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Approve advertising ordinance number five fifty-seven, increasing indebtedness of the borough. This is for the DCD loan for the building project.
So moved. Second.
Move and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We need to approve the twenty twenty-six meeting schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So these new meetings are at five P M.?
Yes.
Same day.
And the, and the first, and the first, when is our? The reorganization meeting is January fifth. January fifth. Fifth at five P M. So you have a, you have a motion?
Uh, we have the motion and the second, so just all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, approve payment request number one for the reroute and interior renovations project.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Business items, we need to approve the ratification of payroll, eleven eighteen through twelve eight of twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approve payment of bills, eleven eighteen through twelve eight of twenty-five.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approve transfers, eleven eighteen through twelve eight of twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approve treasures report for November of twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Except tax collectors report for November of twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I'd like this, I'd like this, that, that's a little bit, before we, before we. We slipped by, you know, Sherry had brought up, uh, private property on Franklin Street.
Yeah, it's in a, that's the Dollar World, I sent them a lot, yes, in one rush.
So if, where, where are we then?
It's in the pack for, let's hear this.
I didn't see it.
It's in the pack.
Yeah.
No, we need a second.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and second for adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
We'd have to keep it on the halfway.
There's a house.
Everybody, Mike always did that.
When you look at the all towns.
That's how we did it.
Which tried and true, you don't know how to change.
Oh, yeah, that's why. We sat down and we just kind of put it all together. Don't you think they did very nicely? Yeah.
They did.
Every ten or fifteen years, yeah. I worked with the old one, she probably came to your needs.
Anthony, I wanna thank you too for four years of amazing service and all that fun stuff.
You keep him in line.
That's shit, dude. Oh, hey, man, just wa, wa, watch the videos, man, all right?
That's my party words for you, man.
Thanks, Anthony. You know what, that means something to me, actually. Me, it me, it means I'm doing something, right? Hey, take care, Matt, Merry Christmas, buddy. You got any trains out for, around the tree yet? Or don't you guys do that?
They're down in the basement year round. I thought you'd be over at the train show yesterday.
Was it yesterday?
Yeah.
I sh, I missed it. Should've, you should've let me know, I would've come over.
You didn't miss anything, it was horrible.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let me know, let me know, you know, I'll, I'll come to that stuff. Thanks, buddy. So, that was the December meeting, good times. Um, you can take the ramp, you're gonna take the steps. Always fun at the Southmont Borough Council meetings, um, so. Thank you, Mr. Pro-disposal, man.
Thank you.
Hey, dude, I'm, I'm.
Appreciate you, appreciate the plug.
Well, you're local, that's, that's number one, okay? And seriously, I mean, like I, like, like I said there, you know, I, I, there've been times of like, you know, you've missed me or whatever, okay? And I've called Amanda and that day you guys send somebody, or they, it gets handled that day, all right? And you guys are local. Who's that, who's in Portage, that's Bergmeyer, right?
No, we were, no, we were in Portage, we moved to Evansburg.
Okay.
So that's where we started, uh, my father started the company in Portage. And then we moved, like, I just moved up to Evansburg at the beginning of this year.
You guys were like behind the bank, like, like, so, right, okay? See, yeah, I went up. Ah, shit, I applied to drive, I, I didn't apply, I came out and taught, maybe it was you I taught, it was a long time ago.
Had to be.
It was a long, long time ago.
Had to be.
To, to, and it wasn't like driving, I don't think I was dri, I don't think you were hired for like.
It might've been a roll-off.
I think that's what it was, yeah, yeah, it's been a long time, but yeah, um.
Yeah, we, um.
That's how I knew where you were, you know what I mean? That's, you know, I was like, hey, he's in Portage, you know, so.
Behind the bank was our office and then we had our yard up the road.
Right.
And then, um, we just moved up to Evansburg, so we put a nice facility up there.
Good, good.
Yeah, hey, we put a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of local families depend on us and we.
Yeah.
Pride for, you know, so we're.
You guys do a good job, too, you know what I mean? So like, while I have you here, okay? And, and, cause, you know, I'm doing this livestream and people do actually come to my, my, my livestream for information on the borough. Tell us what's gonna be new with, 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 with the new.
Okay, so it'd be carted collection.
Okay.
And the carted collection will, you know, you'll have to put your carts out in front to, to where we can get to them. Um, we're gonna send letters out, um.
By cart, you mean like the, like the, the?
Ninety-six gallon.
The big square?
Yeah.
Flip jobs where the truck comes by, you guys come out with an arm and wham, it's done, right? Okay, cool.
So there'll be some areas where we can't do that. They're just tight areas, it'll be rear loaded, they'll still dump them in the back.
Right, right.
Um, and we also will be providing recycling.
Okay.
So that's new, um, the recycling, uh, same can. Um, the nice thing about that is, is everybody says, well, what am I gonna do with all my garbage I typically put out? Well, now they're gonna say, oh, I've got cardboard, I've got plastic, I've got, and they'll be able to put that in their recycling can. It frees up so much more room for the trash.
Yeah, yeah.
It really works, it's a good program.
It needs done, well, I'm not opposed, or, you know what I mean? Some, some of the older residents might be a little bit opposed to it, but I, it needs done, you know what I mean? I'm, I'm all for it, you know, and if it takes a li, you know, it's not that hard to do.
No.
You know?
No, just, it just kinda, you know, saying, hey, instead of bagging us and putting us in the trash, we're gonna make a conscious effort.
Right, are we gonna be getting a recycling bin then to, like?
Yes.
It will be the same size?
Yes.
Oh, so we're gonna have like a, like a, like a, one, different colors?
Yeah, you have a blue one and a black. Um, it probably will be, I've gotta get back and discuss that with my team.
Okay.
Um, but yeah.
I'm just, you know, like I said, just, you know, the more information, you know? Um, and I guess what, spring cleanup will still be the same, we're still doing that or?
Uh, it's one large item.
We're doing that monthly?
Yes, so you'll be able to put out one large item every month and we'll pick it up. Um, we will coordinate that, we'll probably send it in a letter. So every resident will get a letter, here's your recycling schedule, here's your trash day, here's the day we're gonna be doing the bulk cleanup. You can put twelve bulk items or up to, uh, ten contractor bags.
Gotcha.
For.
Gotcha, that makes sense, yeah.
So if you say, hey, I've got this or that, that's gonna be able to use for the month.
Yeah, and hey, let me say this too, I just wanted, while, while, while you're still here, okay? Whoever you have doing, I live up on, on the hill, whoever you have doing my route or whatever, okay, is an amazing, the crew has always been really cool. I don't know what his name is now, it's currently doing my route, okay, but he is a good dude. I like him, he's, he's friendly, does his job pretty damn good, you know what I mean?
Currently, yep, currently, that's Tim Darren, he's a great guy, great driver, so, yep, we appreciate that.
Good, so you let him know that I, you know what I mean?
I will.
I'm giving a little bit of praise here, so, you know, it's.
Thanks, John.
You're gonna do a good job.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you, man, yep.
John, I'm proud of you.
Oh, why's that? I didn't say any bad words today?
No, only once, I'm proud of you. Now, keep it lower than that. You know, I was, that young lady was in there, I was embarrassed.
Merry Christmas to you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Stacey.
Yep, thanks. Well, okay. I'm, I, I'm sure, I'm sure that is nothing that that young lady has never heard before, so. I'm gonna end this, okay, so for all my Southmont residents and all my Southmont friends that watch this, this will be my last Southmont livestream for the year, so Merry Christmas to you and Happy New Year. Um, I'm gonna be, there's gonna be livestreams coming up, uh, most of the week here. I think I'm gonna be doing Westmont tomorrow, um, and, uh, I think we have Brownstown on Wednesday. Um, just, we, we, we have, we have some meetings coming up here, so. I was really, really interested to see that, like, I haven't done any livestreams in a couple of days, maybe ten days or so. Man, my algorithm tanked, like, I, like, I went from getting like, you know, two thousand, three thousand views a day, um, to twenty. Okay, so, hey, appreciate everybody that watches my ca, watches my channel, um, hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. Um, you know, uh, hope everybody enjoyed Stranger Things if they watched it. I know, I did, I had a blast watching, wa, watching. Um, and, uh, wanna shout out to my best friend Jason, Mary Jamis. And, uh, I don't know, appreciate everybody watching, appreciate everybody, everybody that, uh, lets me know that they, they appreciate what I do. I appreciate what you do. Public participation is an important thing and, uh, that's what I do. And, uh, we hold them accountable and, um, hopefully, uh, hopefully I'll continue to do that, God willing. So, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and, uh, if you like what you see, leave a comment. If you don't like what you see, leave a comment, subscribe. Gonna be, uh, maybe starting a new channel here in twenty twenty-three, I'm gonna be doing another interest channel that I, that I'm in, and that I'm into. So, uh, be looking out for that, I'm gonna be start, starting to do that stuff, so. Jean, Merry Christmas to you, thank you very much. So, um, and, uh, that's it, so, okay, bye-bye.